Good evening and welcome to the March 4, 2014 San Bruno Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Biassadi.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samot.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sumut, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and free of any means, without question.
Thank you. Item one, approval of the minutes for January 21, 2014.
I move that minutes be approved.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Communications, item two.
There are no additional communications this evening.
Thank you. Item three, public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission regarding something that's not on the agenda? Okay, public comment is closed. Item four, conflicts of interest. Do we have any this evening? Nope. Okay, good, no conflicts. Item five, business for this evening. Receive a report on the housing element update for 2014 to 2022, planning period, and we're taking public comment this evening. Dave, if you'd be so kind?
Chair Biassadi and planning commissioners, tonight we have a translator, a Spanish-speaking translator, in attendance. With the housing element update, we think it's appropriate to be able to reach out to the Spanish-speaking population within our community, both here in attendance tonight and also watching tonight by way of cable television. So, we have a staff person, Tino Padilla, who will be available for translation tonight. And then, as we move forward through the process, this process will take approximately a year. We hope to adopt the housing element update toward the end of this year and have it certified by the state end of the year or first of next year, January of 2015. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Padilla, so that in Spanish he can provide some guidance for our Spanish-speaking population in terms of perhaps this evening and also through the process. Tino?
Si, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Tino Padilla, oficial de la ciudad de San Bruno. Estoy aquí esta noche para dar servicios y traducción para la comunidad de nuestra audiencia española. Con respecto a una presentación explicando la ciudad de San Bruno elementos de vivienda. Elementos de viviendas de San Bruno es una de las elecciones de la ciudad plan general de San Bruno. Contiene información básica sobre las necesidades de viviendas de la comunidad y programas para ser frente a las necesidades en los próximos ocho años. Después de la presentación, si hay una pregunta que puede tener sobre estas viviendas, puede ir a tradicional, a traducir estas preguntas y conectar también a las planificaciones de comisión y el gerente de planificación. Si usted tiene preguntas acerca del elemento de viviendas de San Bruno, por favor haga una cita con el gerente de planificación, la ciudad, y yo estoy aquí para atenderle y para servirles. Gracias, muchas gracias.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Señor Padilla, le quería decir muchas gracias. Agradezco el tiempo para hablar con la gente afuera de aquí de esta audiencia.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
And thank you, Mr. Padilla. At this point, we're going to move into our presentation, and our long-range planning manager, Mark Sullivan, has prepared a PowerPoint that he's going to share with you this evening, kind of giving an overview of the process that we're embarking into to update our housing element for this cycle. This cycle is for the period of 2014 through 2022. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give you an overview of the process that we've been through in terms of the last cycle, some of our accomplishments, to talk about the process before us through this year, through adoption and certification, and to answer your questions, as well as questions of the public, and then also to receive your comments on this project. There will be a series of public meetings and public hearings throughout this year toward adoption of the updated document. And at this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Mark Sullivan.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Let's just make sure this is on. Good evening, planning commissioners, is that it? Okay. As, I'm just gonna actually reiterate a little bit of what David just said, and basically this presentation will be divided into five sections. We're gonna talk about why are we updating the housing element, what have been our accomplishments, what needs to be done for the current housing element, because that's an extremely important issue, what has changed in the regulations and the things that we need to do for the upcoming housing element, and what topics we want to address in the next planning period. So, first of all, just briefly, what is in the housing element? First of all, the housing element is required by state housing law, and basically it provides a tool, a planning tool, to encourage housing production and housing affordable to lower-income people. And that's really a major focus of the element, is one, to provide housing for the overall community, but really it focuses on the people that are most in need and require affordable housing. So the housing element is divided basically into four sections. One is an assessment of the local housing needs, population existing and future, and population projections, housing conditions, income, affordability. So it looks at the community demographics and the housing stock and gives you a basis for which to plan for the future. It also reviews housing constraints and resources, because that is often the thing that stops housing from being built, or governmental constraints, and sometimes there are market restraints and the lack of resources. So those are analyzed in the housing element. There's an analysis of land inventory, and that is really the housing, the land that's zoned for housing to meet the housing needs of the community, and also quantified objectives about how the city can attain those needs. And then finally, and probably most importantly, includes goals, programs, and implementation plans, actions, which are really the method or way that the city, the actions the city will take in order to meet the quantified objectives and to allow the housing that's needed to be produced. So why are we updating the housing element? Well, fundamentally, we're doing it to comply with state law, that's a bottom line. But we're also, we also need to update housing, the housing needs assessment, to understand what's going on in the community and what the needs of the community are. Again, to identify sites to meet the city's fair share of regional housing needs, to develop goals and implementation actions, and it's an opportunity to, this also very importantly, which has become more and more important, is an opportunity to plan land use strategies to address climate change. And this includes such things as compact development or housing development close to public transportation to reduce the reliance on automobiles. And then, another very important point is it sets the stage for accessing critical funds. Often there are funds available from the state and from other sources, regional estate sources, and you need to have a certified housing element to qualify for that funding. And then finally, I think all of this together, it's good planning and it leads to orderly development and really sort of a more predictable future for the community. And the update process, the way it is designed, there's no need to start from scratch, we're not creating a whole new, a whole new plan, we're using the existing element, and we're updating it to reflect the new conditions and statutory requirements. We're keeping what works and we'll change what doesn't. Okay, this is a scheduled graphic, and as you can see, we are all the way at the left side here, so we're right, we're right in the beginning of this process. But we have started to work on various sections of the housing element. The housing needs section is being updated right now, and there's a draft that will soon be available for public review. So during the next few months, we'll be working on the draft, we'll be identifying the sites for the housing sites and other sections of the plan. And by the time we have a draft, the first draft of the housing element, I think that's the next point where there should be a public meeting or workshop to get feedback from decision-makers, planning commission, city council, but also, very importantly, the public. And I think we need to do a good job of getting the public involved at that point. Then there's a review process, which is basically HCD, the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, reviews the housing element, and they review it twice, and they have 60 days to review it the first time, then we adopt it, and then they have another 120 days to review it again. So when you put all that, that length of time together, it's, the deadline for adoption is January 31, 2015, but the element would need to be adopted at the end of this year to make that January 31 deadline. Hope that made sense. Okay, what have our accomplishments been? Well, the current housing element covered the period from 2007 until 2014, and the city has, really, a lot has been done in that time. In terms of construction and actual development, over 730 units have been completed or are in construction. The residential design guidelines were adopted in 2010, and then, you know, that's a critical piece to help both the public and designers and architects and the planning commission in evaluating housing projects. In the general plan, we identified emergency shelter zoning, which is a requirement of state law, and the planning commission and the city council were involved in that. That was, I think, a significant accomplishment. We adopted the transit corridors plan. The transit corridors plan, if fully built out, would accommodate 1,610 units, which is a significant amount of housing. We started the zoning code update and have made significant progress in that, and that's moving along, as you know, and that you should be reviewing that again soon. We've continued to provide funding support for housing organizations that provide assistance for residents of San Bruno, and that includes HIP Housing, which does a home sharing program, and Shelter Network, which provides transitional housing for single mothers and children. And finally, we adopted the low-market rate housing program, and we've built the in-loo fee fund for that program, and that fund is now up to about $4 million that can be used for affordable housing. And just to go through some of the projects that have been completed or in progress, Crestmore Rebuild, 17 houses completed or under construction and more to come, the Crossing Parcels III and IV, that was 350 units, Cedar Mills, 14 single-family homes, Skycrest, 24 single-family homes, that project was stopped by the economic downturn but is now proceeding and nearing completion, Merrimont, that was 70 single-family homes on a former school site, and Pacific Bay Vista, another large project which has been vacant for many years and is moving along and starting to rent up. So that's, that's a lot in the last seven years. So what else needs to be done for the current housing elements cycle? This is a critical piece, because when the housing element was certified in 2010 by HCD, the city committed to making several zone code updates amendments. And in order to be in compliance with state housing law, we need to do those before this housing element cycle is finished. So we need to do them fairly soon. And basically, there are four areas that need to be amended. And one is to allow emergency shelters. As I mentioned before, we designated an area for emergency shelters, but we actually, we haven't actually updated the zoning code to include that, to allow emergency shelters by right without a conditional use permit. And we've identified the area where that would happen, but we need to actually amend the zoning code to implement it. Secondly, we need to amend the definition of residential care facilities to include transitional and supportive housing. The state requires that transitional and supportive housing be allowed by right within residential zones, and so that's another important thing we need to do. The third thing is allow reasonable accommodations, and basically allowing an exception in zoning and land use for housing with, for people with disabilities. So that if there were a, for example, a retrofit that didn't quite meet the zoning standards, the community development director could make a judgment that, for reasonable accommodations, that can be done, for example, like a ramp or something that goes into a setback, something like that. And finally, there's a density bonus law, which needs to be consistent with state law, and we're already, we already have to abide by state density bonus law. However, there are a number of provisions which we have no control over. However, if we amend the ordinance to include provisions that make sense in San Bruno, we have more control over the type of density bonus and incentives and concessions that could be given to developers who provide affordable housing. And so those, you will see those, I think there'll be a more complete presentation with more detailed information at the next planning commission meeting on these issues, and they'll come forward for consideration for approval within the next few months. Okay, what has changed? Well, we are working in the 21 Elements process, which I think you're aware is a consortium of the 20 cities and the county and the county itself, and it was used actually in that last housing element cycle, but in a fairly limited way. However, this time, the group is working together in a more coordinated fashion, and I think it will help to make the update of the housing elephant, element, a more efficient process. There are many things that cities have in common that not every, you know, we don't need to recreate the wheel 21 times. There are things that can be done that apply to all communities with adjustments, obviously, for each community. But that's, that's something that we're participating in and is, I think, a really good process. And as I say, all the communities in the county are participating. Then there's streamlined review by HCD, and basically if you qualify for a streamlined review, the 21 Elements process will be reviewed much more quickly and expeditiously by HCD. They'll look at everything at once, and, you know, we'll be using similar methodology, similar data from ABAG. So the approval process will be faster. But in order to qualify for streamlined review, we do need to have a compliant housing element, which going back to what we're saying before, we need to get those zoning amendments completed. There's a new housing element planning period in this upcoming cycle. Formerly, the housing element was updated every five years, and it's changed to an eight-year cycle. But the caveat is that the housing element needs to be adopted on time in order to qualify for that eight-year cycle. So basically, that's January 2015 with a grace period of 120 days, so at the very outset, May. But if you don't do it by then, then you're required to update it every four years. So that's sort of the penalty for not getting it done on time. There's a new city fair share of regional housing needs. This is, this is done periodically. It's called the regional housing needs allocation, and in San Bruno's case this year, it's 1,155 units. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The housing needs assessment needs to address special housing needs for people with developmental disabilities, and we're working on that. There's also Plan Bay Area and Sustainable Community Strategy, you may be aware of this. This is a regional plan, it's part of an overall state initiative, and the intention is to promote compact development close to transit and to reduce greenhouse emissions, and that this is, these are efforts that are going on every community in the state. And then finally, something that we can't forget is the loss of redevelopment, which has meant the loss of the largest source of funding for affordable housing in the state, and that's impacted everybody, our community and most other communities in the state. So what are some topics for the next cycle? I'm just gonna, these are just topics I'll cover in a minute. One is the fair share of regional housing needs and identifying adequate sites to meet those needs. Second is supporting development of housing for low and moderate income households, including extremely low-income households, opportunities to address special needs groups, and remove and mitigate constraints. So first, San Bruno's regional housing needs allocation. This is our, this is what we are required to provide adequate sites to accommodate 1,155 units. We don't have to build those units, we just have to make sure that there are enough sites to accommodate them. And this sort of trickles down from the top where the expectation is that the state will grow by a certain size, the region will grow by a certain size, and then the, that population growth is allocated in, to each city and community within the region. And it's also divided up by, by income level, affordability. So in our case, it's 1,155 units. Just to put it in perspective, the expectation is that the Bay Area will grow by almost 2 million people by 2040. So in a way, every community needs to do their part to accommodate that growth. And this, this table also shows you those, what those income limits are, and that's the 2013 incomes for a family of four. So as far as identifying sites goes, the housing element needs to show that there, that the sites are zoned for housing, so that the zoning can actually accommodate it. We're in the process of analyzing this right now, but I think we're gonna need to have the zone code update, the comprehensive zone code update, separate from the other four things, in order to achieve the units that we need to do for the regional housing needs allocation. So the transit corridors plan, as I mentioned, has, you know, can accommodate at least 1,610 units. That's part of the zone code update, and, you know, when that is done, we'll have more than adequate sites to, you know, fulfill our obligation. I just wanted to give you an idea of, this is an area of the, of the housing element that's very important. As I mentioned, it really focuses on affordable housing and people with the greatest needs. And, you know, people in, with special housing needs are, these are specifically analyzed in the housing element, and they include, and they generally have affordable housing needs. They generally have lower incomes and often need assistance. Those are seniors, people living with disabilities, female-headed households, large households, extremely low-income households, and homeless needs. The last section of the housing, or the section of the housing element that addresses how we can accomplish the, fulfilling the needs of developing enough, providing enough housing sites, providing affordable housing for people with special needs, these are the implementation actions and programs. And for example, we have an inclusionary program, and that is, covers both for sale and rental housing. However, there's been a court case that has overturned the rental aspect of the inclusionary housing program, so we cannot require affordable housing for rental, rental projects. However, if it were structured differently as a, as an exaction or development impact fee, that could be done. And so we are working actually with 21 Elements on an affordable housing nexus study, which would allow us to adjust the program so that it would be, you know, that we could apply it to housing in San Bruno. Obviously, to promote a variety of housing types to accommodate, you know, wide range of people with wide-ranging needs. The transit corridors plan, which would provide housing near transit, you know, the, the idea is to get that going and start to get some projects within the transit corridors area. Funding for affordable housing, as I mentioned, we do have the in-loofe fund. There are other sources of funding, such as state tax credits and other types of funding, and we need to focus on those things. And then senior housing and assisted living, and this is more sort of what's the city's priority or intention in that area. You know, how strongly does the community want to promote this type of housing? I just mentioned the, this is about the constraints to housing, I just mentioned the court decision, that's, it's called the Palmer decision, that invalidates the rental, inclusionary housing. And so we are, we are working on trying to address that. Ordinance 1284, you know, I think overall, it's probably got aspects of it that the community, you know, really wants to keep and probably makes sense to keep, but there are other aspects of it that, you know, maybe people want to think about adjusting. And as part of the transit corridors plan, there is a recommendation to adjust height limits in the transit corridors area, and there could possibly be a vote, maybe in the next year, but certainly within this housing element cycle. Parking requirements can often be a hindrance, you know, adopting the transit corridors plan rock, parking recommendations, that will be proposed in the zoning code update. And the next one, water and sewer infrastructure, that's a complicated one, because with the transit corridors plan, there was an analysis for the capacity and, you know, the water availability, and basically it's found that there's, there's enough water to accommodate the development within the transit corridors area. The issue is more the condition and, yeah, the condition of the infrastructure, and upgrading and replacing infrastructure, which I think is a, we know is a need all over the city, but certainly in this core area. We know is a need all over the city, but certainly in this core area. So that's something that's very important, a very important issue that will have to be addressed. Okay. So that sort of concludes things. And I just want to point out the key points, I think, is that housing element compliance, that's something that is fundamental to this process, and that's the Zone Code update. Identifying housing sites, something we're in the process of doing and will bring to you, show to you in the near future. Obviously, programs addressing housing needs and priorities. And I think one way to look at that is to look at the current housing element and the existing programs and goals and implementation actions and sort of build from there. What's... You know, what are the things in there that we still feel are important? How can we adjust them to make them better, to make them more effective? Public input and participation. I think that we need to do a better job and definitely want to put together a forum where we can attract more public at the next stage when we have a draft together and we can get some comment on that. And then finally, adopt the housing element on time. That's key. So the housing element update process, information about it, the current housing element, they're all available online if you go to the city website. And we're also available to answer any questions, meet with people who have specific issues, questions, comments. So that concludes my presentation. So I would just say that if you have any clarifying questions or comments about the presentation before we allow the public to make comments, and then we can discuss.
Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Any questions for Mark?
To the chair?
Please.
On time is key. I didn't see... Do you have any scheduled dates for the housing element update process? The documentation that you provided is schematic, but I just wondered, since it's key...
Yeah.
...that it'd be done on time if you actually have planned dates?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the schematic does give a broad... The date, the final date for certification is January 31, 2015. There's a 120-day grace period, so that takes you out to March. But I think the key is that we have public hearings in September and October. So I think what we would want to do is have a draft between May and, I think, by June and to get your feedback on the draft, submit it to HCD, and then we would go for approval by October. But I get your point, and we will put together more solid dates in a schedule that is clearer to people.
Okay. Usually, when there's a... Being on time is key, usually there are dates is what I was trying to see. Secondly, for the 1,155 sites, how are they allocated by city? Were they allocated by the population of each city?
It's a fairly... It's a complicated process that the state provides an overall number to a region. And the council of governments for that region has a big number. So in our case, it was the Association of Bay Area Governments. In most cases, in every other city except San Mateo County, ABAG then assigns a number to each city. So it comes directly from ABAG. In the case of San Mateo County, with the 21 elements process, the 21 elements actually divided up the housing units. So we, as a group, worked together to do that. It was... The methodology was very similar to the methodology that ABAG used. But what happened was, depending on the particular sort of circumstances of each community, there was an opportunity to make adjustments. So there was local involvement in determining what those numbers were. And it's... You know, the correlation certainly correlates with the size of a community, definitely. But there are a lot of other factors that go into it, which having to do with having transit stations, because there's huge emphasis through Plan Bay Area to concentrate housing near transit, to create more compact housing. Does that answer your question?
Well, my question was how the number of units was allocated by city. So it's sort of an unknown process then?
No, it's a process that includes population, employment, suitability of land near train stations. So it's a formula that includes a lot of different factors.
Oh, so there is a formula?
Yes.
Okay. And I have, I think, one or two more questions. The third one is, is the Transit Corridor Plan in force yet? Doesn't... I get the impression from part of what you said that there has to be a vote on Ordinance 1284 before the plan can actually be put into force. Is that right?
Yeah, I think what we like to say is that in order to fully implement the plan, there are certain things that need to be done. And so the... Obviously, the height restrictions under Ordinance 1284 are still in place. So it would require a vote to change that.
Does that mean that you can do everything except the height aspects?
Yes. Would you like to assist with this?
You know, if I could add to that. I think in terms of the Transit Corridors Plan, as you know, it was adopted by the city council last year in February of 2013. So the land use, the development standards and design guidelines, those key components carry forward and can be implemented. But as Mark is mentioning, as far as Ordinance 1284, being able to go higher than three stories or 50 feet is something we can't do at this time without Ordinance 1284 being amended. Above-ground parking garages is something we can't do at this time. Increasing residential densities in certain areas that an amendment of 1284 would allow can't be done. So again, as Mark indicated, with an amendment to 1284, some of the key aspects, really key aspects of the adopted Transit Corridors Plan cannot yet be adopted or cannot yet be implemented, I should say. But in terms of land use, in terms of development standards and design guidelines, yes. And so as an application would come in for new development within the Transit Corridors Plan area, we would be using that plan as a base guide for new development. So for example, the cinema redevelopment site, as we work with a prospective developer of that property, the Transit Corridors Plan, the adopted Transit Corridors Plan is our guide. It's our base guide.
Okay. I thought there was another, but that's all for now. Thank you very much.
To the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
If I could just follow up on Commissioner Peterson's comments, especially the last one regarding the transit corridor. If the developer wants to come in and build something that is going to increase the units that we need in one regard or another, you know, at least take... Leave some of that pressure from another area. Excuse me. But in doing so, his plan is, you know, a four-story building. In reality, at this point, can't be approved, correct?
That is correct. So at this time, we would work with the prospective developer and implement or try to implement those parts of the Transit Corridors Plan that had been adopted and are not subject to an amendment to 1284. So for example, we could go up to three stories or 50 feet. The land use scheme of the Transit Corridors Plan, we would use that as a guide in terms of land use. You know, the concept, basic concept of commercial on-ground floor with either residential units or office units above would be our guide in terms of working with that prospective developer. Certain design guidelines, certain development standards in the Transit Corridors Plan would be our guide in terms of saying, this is how the property should be developed.
Right. And I understand that. I appreciate you for clarifying that for me as well. But it's still... Our hands are tied currently until we can get something out there for the general public to vote on. Because you could have the best plan in the world, which the Transit Corridor is a very good plan. But until you can get some relief for the height in particular, it's almost like it's not really there, in my opinion. It makes it much more difficult to have a developer want to come in and do something along those guidelines. If yet land use is there and you could do that, but yet you're still restricted by a height limitation, that... Do we have any idea when there may be some sort of, you know, public vote on amending that? I mean, is that in the works as well? It's kind of a couple... Guess maybe I'm mixing up a couple of questions here, but you know, I mean, it just seems like you can't do one without the other. You gotta have the vote of the public. You have to have their approval. And they need to fully understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And yet you're also trying to, you know, I would imagine, you know, kind of, you know, marry some developers into the city to develop this particular plan. But you can't do that. It's like asking them to get married without a ring. I don't know. It's just kind of... I don't know if that's what analogy, but whatever. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I think we do. And you know, you have some very, very good points. Key aspects of the Transit Corridors Plan in terms of providing incentives to develop and redevelop properties here in San Bruno really rely on, to a large extent, these key things we're talking about this evening in terms of adjusting height limits to go somewhat higher, allowing for increased residential densities, allowing for above-ground parking garages. Those are key aspects of that plan to really fully implement it, as Mark said, and to realize the economic incentives for development and redevelopment. So in terms of bringing this forward, we are, you know, looking at this and, you know, we hope to look perhaps toward the end of this year, perhaps a November ballot measure. That's not certain at all at this point. But we realize that we need to bring this matter forward to the voters, to get a vote of the people, to fully implement that plan. And it is very important. We realize that.
And then the other two other comments I would have, again, following up on Commissioner Peterson's initial comment about the timeline. And I'm probably, as people might know me, I'm probably not the best person to speak of having goals and timelines. But you know, it makes perfect sense that if you have a certain deadline that you have to meet, that you have certain dates along that way, you know, that are earmarked to be, you know, this is accomplished or, you know, we've gotten through to this point. So I would just, you know, reiterate what Commissioner Peterson was saying earlier about how important that is. And I'm sure you all know that as well. I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sure, but just wanted to make sure.
Again, we agree with you, and it was an excellent point that Vice Chair Peterson made. At this point, we've got the broader timeline, but absolutely, we'll be looking at specific planning commission dates and city council dates to basically make sure that we meet this timeline, this schedule. There's a lot of advantage to the streamlined process that Mark outlined in his presentation, and we'll want to make sure that San Bruno can take advantage of that.
Absolutely. And then one other question that I have, since I don't really quite understand it, is under the... What have we accomplished? And the very last bullet point was, the city has collected over $4 million in fees for the affordable housing through the below-market rate housing program. So that $4 billion, is that supposed to offset the cost for the city or for the developer in the low-income housing market? Is that what it's... Is that how that money works? Because I don't understand how that money works.
It could be used in both ways. I don't... I think that's probably a very important program that we should consider in this housing element, is how should that money be used?
How's that money been used in the past?
It hasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly recent, and it's grown. And, you know, it can be used to leverage, you know, one or two or possibly more, you know, housing developments for providing affordable housing.
So there's... There's certain criteria that that fund would have to meet or whatever in order for it to be allocated?
Well, it would have to be used for low- and moderate-income housing.
Okay.
I mean, it would have to be used to assist in creating low- and moderate-income housing. And it could be used in conjunction with funds from other sources. So it's... You know, it's pretty powerful to have that. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's significant. And I think that that's an important sort of policy and programmatic consideration in this housing element.
Thank you.
I have two. The first one, I'd like to reflect on Commissioner Chase's comments about a timeline. And I'd like to point out that he was here on time this evening. Secondly, on behalf of all the folks that are sitting at home, whenever we start talking about 1284 and raising height limits and stuff, everyone freaks out because they think they're going to pull the skyscraper next door to him. Would you be so kind as to reiterate and explain to people what areas of town are going to be impacted, which areas won't be what we're talking about, so that people can have a really clear understanding of what areas and what direction we're really talking about?
All right. Well, I have a map. I realize it's not the most, the clearest map, but it's... That's the Transit Corridors area, and the different colors show different so-called character areas. And they would also end up having specific zoning, zoning specific to each area, as well as heights associated with each area. And so on the left side, the diagonal, that is El Camino Real. And the recommendation in the plan was for up to five stories and 70 feet. That was the recommendation in the Transit Corridors Plan. For downtown, it was 55 feet, which is just five feet over the current, and four stories. And for the area around the new train station, which is the yellow area, in that area, you cannot actually build housing in that area because of the airport noise contours. It's above 70 decibels, so housing's not allowed, or new housing. But the proposal there is for office up to seven stories. So that would be the tallest area, and just right in the core of it, the block, the sort of triangular block in the middle. And then the outer blocks would be some... would be similar to the El Camino, which would be five stories. And then on San Bruno Avenue, it would also be five stories. So, it's just in what's currently the, the commercially-zoned properties with some exceptions.
And what was the height for seventy, seven stories?
For the seven stories, 90 feet. But, yeah, around 85 to 90. And as I say, just in the, the center portion there. Or the, excuse me, let me, let me correct that. I actually have a pointer, so. So, this is, right in the middle is San Mateo Avenue. So, it's west of San Mateo Avenue, but the, the portion of the area that's closest to the railroad tracks, and the portion that's on the outer side, where, you know, next to the neighborhood, would be five stories. So, so seven here.
I think too, as, as I might add to that, you know, those are the maximum heights. And Chair Biassari, as you indicated, it would be, this, these provisions would be limited, limited to these areas and not extend beyond. So, those are maximums and limited specifically to the, the areas Mark described on the diagram. And in addition, through the transit corridors plan process over several years, as you and the city council and community worked on that, that plan, there were a number of design standards and guidelines that were added as well to address impacts to adjoining properties. So, generally speaking, as you go up higher in height, there are additional setbacks and stepbacks and other design standards and requirements, and a full design review process and environmental review that would go, go forward with these individual projects. So, there, there would be public participation, public review, city staff review, and environmental review associated with these individual projects.
Thank you. Yeah, my concern is just always when you're, when we're talking about changing something that people have voted on, we need to be really clear and make sure that they know right up front, and over and over again, tell them the same message that we're only talking about the transit corridors area and not their neighborhoods and residential areas. Okay?
Through the chair.
Please.
And just one other comment on that. As I said on that Transit Corridor Committee as well, you're absolutely right. I mean, there were architectural guidelines for the setbacks, and it's not like there'd be a, you know, a 90-foot wall of a building, you know, it'd be, like you say, step back, and then it was, it was well thought out, well, well conceived, I believe, by the general public and, and everybody who participated in that. So, yeah, I think you're absolutely right. Cover your bases, let everybody know what's going on, and let them know often.
Thank you. Right, does anyone else have comments? Nope. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak? Please step to the podium, give us your name and...
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Josh Hug. I'm Program Manager for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work across the county on housing affordabilities as they affect the individual communities here. And the housing element process is a, as Mr. Sullivan said, is a once every eight-year process now. To have this explicit conversation about the housing needs that is affecting not only San Bruno, but every other city in the Bay Area at this point. So, there are 101, 110 of these processes going on simultaneously right now. Since the last how, I, I guess, without getting into too many specifics, because I think that's where the process, these future meetings will get into, I just wanted to comment on the, the landscape and how it's changed since the last planning, you know, housing element review. And I think Mr. Sullivan spoke about these, but also just wanted to sensitize you about some of the ramifications. Just one statistic that was presented earlier this year, Joint Venture Silicon Valley, in combination with the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, held what they called the State of the Valley Summit. And in that, they presented data that showed that last year, just last year, Silicon Valley produced 46,000 jobs. Associated with that six, 46,000 jobs was 7,000 homes. So, you can see already that the balance, we're very good at producing jobs and bringing them here into Silicon Valley. We're the northern end of Silicon Valley. We have a lot of work to do as far as meeting the housing needs of that workforce. As a, as a result of that, our in-commute rates into the county is about 61%. We have about 200,000 people who in-commute into the county every day. So, as people complain about traffic and congestion, a good portion of that is because of the lack of affordability here in this county, and this process directly addresses that. When you lay on top of that processes, several processes, one, we have an aging community who has changing housing needs. We have a lack of stock to meet those future needs for a growing senior population. If seniors want to downsize, they're sick of mowing their lawn, they have a tough time keeping up their home, they start having mobility issues, and they want to downsize to something that's closer to the bus. Sam Trans has recently improved its bus service on El Camino significantly. There are very few opportunities for seniors to take advantage of that. You couple that with an intense investment born out of SB 375, this greenhouse gas reduction strategy, that is trying to better synchronize housing and transportation together. Communities across the Bay Area have picked specific areas, what they call priority development areas. Oftentimes, they were synonymous with what used to be the old RDAs, the redevelopment areas. Over the next 25 years, $300 billion of transportation and infrastructure investment is going into those very specific areas, which is great in order to bolster up the capacity to, to, to meet that chicken-and-egg dilemma of housing and transportation, having the ridership and how, having transit that's running often enough for people to want to take it. The problem with it is that, under the current environment, particularly with the Palmer case, as, as Mr. Sullivan described, which affected inclusionary housing, a, a general lack of funding for affordable housing. It's great that the city has $4 million. It's an incredible short supply right now, particularly because redevelopment went away. That took away about $1 billion a year in, in affordable housing money across the state of California that has yet to be made up. It's a real, so between planned Bay Area and a lack of, of mechanisms for inclusion, we have a real potential for gentrification here. And we see this discussion as an important part of the policies and goals that are defined through the housing element process to meet those gaps, to provide the funding that's necessary. We're working on the state, on finding at least a portion of it picked up by the state. There's some bills under consideration right now. And then finding local solutions as well. And Mr. Sullivan spoke about this grand nexus study. All 21 cities are, are going through this process right now. San Bruno is an important part of that as well. So, we look forward to working with, with you and staff and the council on meeting these large issues that really have generational impacts. Our inability to address these issues today will really set the stage for a lot more hardship in the future. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I didn't come down here to talk, but I wanted to ask a question, and I'm not sure I understand.
Can you give us your...
I may be way off the beaten path here, but you talked about parking requirements. I'm not sure how that applies, but it seems to me that there ought to be some movement towards getting people to use their garages rather than using them as storage areas. And I didn't know if there's any movement in that direction for parking requirements compared to what's going on now in the city.
Would you be so kind as to give us your name, please?
I'm sorry. Who asked me to say that? Who asked me? I'm sorry. Carolyn Livinggood, Cheryl Drive.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Richardson. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development at Habitat Greater San Francisco. And just a little bit about Habitat Greater San Francisco, we serve working families and homeownership. It's a 0% down, 0% mortgage program, whereas you, the families provide 500 hours of sweat equity, and that acts as their down payment. And then we actually act as the bank and provide a 0% interest loan to that family. We usually typically serve families of very low and low income. So, that's families earning an AMI of 40 to 60%, but we have looked at going up to 80% depending on the project. And I'm here just to, to say a couple of things. One, I, I've had conversations with Mark in, in the past, and it seemed like, from a developer perspective, the ordinance 1284, ordinance 1284 is, is a, a challenge for a developer to come in into the, the transit, the transit corridor plan and to, and to develop. We would like to develop more affordable housing in our area. We cover Marin, San Francisco, and San Mateo County. And we have learned very quickly that, you know, we cannot be the typical habitat you may think of that builds single-family homes. We need to be built up. And so, we've just recently completed a 36 condominium development in San, in, in Daly City at 7555 Mission Street, where it's three stories wood-framed construction over a podium. And so, certainly raising the height limits beyond three, 30 feet or three stories is certainly something that we could, would definitely be interested in and, and could do, along with volunteer labor. And so, I, I just really encourage the city to work with the community and others to, you know, do your part in the Bay Area, and do what you can to bring this to the voters, at least to decide whether or not these proposed height limits in this specific area of San Bruno is acceptable to them for the reasons stated to accomplish the goals in the housing element, and, and for the city to achieve its, its, its goals of producing housing. So, and whatever we could do to help that in terms of Habitat Greater San Francisco, feel free to call on us. I also chair the Housing Leadership Council, which is Josh, who just recently spoke on, Chair of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. And again, our mission is to produce housing overall, not only affordable housing, but housing overall in San Mateo County for all the reasons, or some of the reasons that Josh stated, that we, we face in this county. So, I'm born and raised in San Francisco. Have you heard the news? Our mayor up there has really spoken out about his goal of, of producing housing at a faster rate. I believe housing and transportation go together. So, if San Francisco County is trying to produce 30,000 units of housing by 2020, it would certainly help the region if San Mateo County is also trying to produce housing, along with Alameda County, and, you know, we all, it all affects the region, transportation and housing. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Anyone? No. Okay. All right. Then we'll close public comment, and since this is not an action item, we'll move to city staff discussion, item six.
You know, I would, would suggest though, as we, we wrap this up, you certainly asked questions of clarification before. You had the opportunity to, to hear from public members on the housing element update. If, if you have any comments that you'd like to, to share with staff as we, you know, move forward in terms of preparing that draft, we, we've certainly heard some direction from you tonight in terms of identifying a more specific schedule, for example, and the idea of, you know, trying to move forward with ordinance 1284 and trying to get that before the voters here in this community. Is there anything else you would like to add in terms of comments before we move to the next agenda item?
No. No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Regarding item six on our agenda, city staff discussion, we would look to you to assign three members to sit on the Architecture Review Committee, so if three of you could volunteer for that, we certainly would appreciate that.
March 13th, I won't be available on March 13th, I'm sorry.
I got nothing.
Commissioner Chase?
Sure.
Two others, please.
All right.
Peterson and Johnson. Oh. Okay, Commissioner Semet. Okay. So, the, the next item on the agenda is item B, Planning Commission Discussion. And this has to do with actually you, your body, selecting a, a new chair and a vice chair. And just in terms of giving you information as far as the order, we've kind of kept track over time of, of who's been chair and vice chair and so forth. Vice Chair Peterson would typically move up to the position of chair at this point. Again, that's at your, at your direction. And then in terms of vice chair, as far as looking at, at the past, our history, it would appear that Commissioner Semet, if he would be interested in being the vice chair, would be perhaps the next in line, followed by Commissioner Marshall, and then Commissioner Johnson. So, with that, if you could proceed and select a, a chair and a vice chair, please.
Very good. Anyone want to make a motion for a new chair?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I move that we appoint Commissioner Peterson as vice chair.
Vice chair or chair?
Chair.
I'm sorry.
It's chair.
That's right, it's chair. And do you want me to make all the motions, one at a time?
I think just the one, one at a time, please.
All right, so...
I'll second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And do we have a motion for a vice chair?
Yeah, before anybody nominates me, I would decline.
Who was the next?
And then in terms of order, Commissioner Marshall and then Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Marshall is not here this evening, obviously.
Does one need to be present to win?
No.
Do we know if Commissioner Marshall's interested?
We don't know.
Okay, I'll nominate him anyway.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye. Okay, we have a winner.
It's time to run our railroad.
There you go. Is there anyone else who has a comment this evening before we go?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I would just like to acknowledge, although she's not here this evening, Shauna has left as secretary in, for many, many years. She's taking the minutes, and we have read them, and thoroughly have read them, and, or actually, I should say thoroughly, she has delivered them. And, and she's done a lot of hard work, so I personally want to acknowledge Shauna for, for her hard work. You know, while she's not here to receive it, I'd like that acknowledgement to be, to be known.
And if we could add to that, Shauna has, has given notice, as Commissioner Johnson has indicated. And Shauna's last day with the city will be this Thursday, March 6th, and she has found a, a new position. It sounds very, very exciting, and we wish her very well in this new position. And we thank her for her tremendous work with the commission and as part of our staff, and not only, you know, helping to deliver your minutes on a regular and timely basis, but also all the staff work she did within our department. the staff work she did within our department, and we thank her.
To the chair?
Please.
I think we ought to thank our current chair, Rick Biassadi, for a job well done this year. Appreciate it. Kept it streamlined and online. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much. And mirroring Commissioner Johnson's remarks, on behalf of the entire commission, I think we would like to thank Shauna for her work and efforts, and make that part of the record so that she can type it before she leaves. All right. And we'd also like to thank Mr. Padilla this evening for reaching out to the community and helping us reach all the members of our community so that we can do a more thorough and effective job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.